Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting of Greenville City Council and the wonderfully air-conditioned City Hall. Nice to have you with us tonight. If you'll please rise for invocation by Councilmember Brasington, followed by political allegiance.
Would you please pray with me? Dear Lord, we gather here tonight in tend on doing good work, and we ask as we always do for your guidance and for you to lead us towards wise and sound decisions that benefit not some, but rather all of Greenville citizens. Together, Lord, we thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy in our community, but we also recognize the many opportunities before us to further improve lives and look out for our brothers and sisters in need. And so again, we ask for the courage and the wisdom as city leaders to do the things that would help make everybody in a place to call Greenville the best home it can be. We live this prayer in your name. Amen.
Amen. Our boys. Do the Lord's command, as do their God, who which says, "One nation, under God, in the just one, with liberty, justice, and love." Thank you all very much. For the call roll.
Councilmember John Deворcan.
Here.
Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Clerk will go.
Councilmember Ken Gibson.
Here.
Councilmember Will Brasington.
Here.
Councilmember Russell Stahl.
Here.
Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Nakwa.
Here. You have the minutes of June 9th, which will stand approved as minuteless, there are no objections. Seeing none, they are so approved. We have a special presentation up front tonight with our employees of the city of Greenville retiring after many, many years, and we have a little ceremony. We're going to push that to the front of the agenda right now, so unless the city manager did join me down here for a presentation. Okay. All right. Okay. Let's see. It's always a great honor at this time of year to bring wonderful service to everyone's attention, which also kind of leads to just the guy from Chamin. But thank you all for being here. I think everyone will vote you here tonight. Your priest could be part of the ceremony as well. As you might know, we have combined service years of 463 years in the city. Wow. Okay. These fine folks. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I believe it fair to say a number of folks are probably here tonight on one item on the agenda concerning a rezoning, and I have an important letter to read or note to read from the school district. It says, "On behalf of Superintendent Dr. Burke Royster and the Board of Trustees for Greenville County Schools, we are formally requesting that council defer consideration of item 15F as listed on the agenda." But deferring the issue, and that of course is the parking issue at Greenville High, this will afford Greenville County Schools and the city of Greenville an opportunity to continue discussions and seek solutions to the parking issues around Greenville High School. So that item will be deferred tonight. We have a number of folks who signed up to speak on it, and I'll kind of leave it to everyone's judgment if you wish to say a few words. I know we have a number of folks in the neighborhood who sent emails and letters, and we appreciate that. Of course, the planning commission voted 5-0 on that matter earlier, and we know from the position of the neighborhood for sure. And we have a number of folks, I guess, from the school district perhaps as well, I don't really know. But the item will be deferred, I think, if council agrees with that. I think it's fair to say every one of this council, we care deeply about Greenville High School as well as the neighborhood, so it's very, it's something we actually desire to do, which is to get involved in this issue. We have not been involved previously to an extent, really, in terms of looking for real estate opportunities and just good strategies on how to provide more parking in the area. Certainly in our interest to see that done as well. So we are delighted and happy to accept the offer from the school district to be involved in this process and to offer up our best solutions, which I think we can do. We have a pretty good track record on this kind of thing. I always tell people, we know our city really well, and I think it's something we would welcome the opportunity to do so, and the city manager feels the same way. So with that, if anyone who signed up to speak wishes to speak, we can do that, but otherwise you can enjoy the one. Let's see. Trying to get my... Hold on just one second. Presley, are you here? Is Anna Presley here? Okay, I thought perhaps she was going to come. Okay. Otherwise, a number of folks signed up to speak. I'm just going to go down the list, and we ask you to remember to do a three-minute rule on speaking, and there's also going to be some kind of protest in front of City Hall at what time? 6:00, 6:30, so.
Not to do with that item, though.
Yeah, not to do with that item.
Be clear.
Glad none of you were taking protests. So with that, Justin Hurst had signed up to speak. Okay, Scott Carlin. Dennison LaRue for the neighborhood. You want to say a few words? Okay. I think if you speak for the neighborhood, perhaps that can take care of most of the points, and the rest of the folks who signed up perhaps don't have to speak tonight.
If the council care, they may ask a few questions before I do speak.
Sure.
What does the deferral mean exactly? The reason why I'm asking is because we keep up to date on the agenda, the post on Friday, and then it's a lot of neighborhood door knock in. A lot of effort gets and goes into getting the folks to show up here today. We all did prepare something to speak, and you know, we're all, I'm worried about neighborhood fatigue. If this does come up again, and we're expected to keep having the same amount of vigor, I'm concerned that it might not.
Yeah.
Materialize in quite the same way.
Yeah. Well, we would operate it certainly in good faith. I think council members had been trying to send signals to folks for some time that we'd like to be involved in this issue and like to be engaged, and we share some of the concerns of the neighborhood as well, and so we would just need time to do it. I think that'd be a deferral from this agenda. Ms. Manager, do you want to speak to that? When would we expect to put it back on the agenda if we come up with a... Of course, we hope we come up with a new solution to the problem.
I think that we would look at putting it back on the agenda in August.
In August sometime.
At the August 11th meeting, because I don't think that the July meeting would allow us time to have real conversation, to try to figure out solutions. So I think that the soonest it would be back on the agenda would be August 11th.
If it is.
It could be withdrawn completely. Could it not?
Yes, they could choose to withdraw it completely. That's correct.
Even with the new solutions, it would still skip the planning commission, sort of giving us the opportunity to go with it.
Yes, it would come straight back to council. Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. And we give everybody plenty of notice of what's going on. In fact, in fact, I'd go a step further. I think in any discussion with the school district, with the city, we would probably call you guys too to be part of the process.
Appreciate that.
That's what we would do.
Would it, I mean, would it please council, rather than me using my three minutes just to hit 30 seconds, and then we can try to get 30 seconds from a few other folks? If they prefer to me to just go ahead and summarize my best and my best.
Let's not speak.
Sure.
Dennison is a new neighborhood association president who stepped up very nobly, so we'll do, everybody has a right to speak and has signed up or not, just like the district did.
Yeah.
For three minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Dennison LaRue, President of the Green Ave Neighborhood Association. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the residents, and also just people with history about our neighborhood and the crossroads that we're at. Our neighborhood, it really began as a private neighborhood in the late 1930s. Like, a lot of urban communities, it went through a significant fall. 1984, we started Greenville's first neighborhood association with this realm of issue like that to our... She worked with the city, the school, and with our residents to come up with a plan that really materialized in the 2000s with the city's master plan for Green Ave. That broad revitalization and expanded school from 12 acres to the 30 acres it has now today. That's also led to the problems of consuming the land that we do have. Today, they have 34.1% of our 86.7 acres. To put that in perspective, I looked at the city's GIS data for the other contiguous properties in downtown Greenville. Bonse Coors, 11 acres, Springfield Cemetery, 18, the development of University Ridge, 20, Greenville High, 29.5. And it's just, when they keep asking for land to solve this parking issue, if you look at history past, in 2005, there's a West End Development Master Plan where the experts in there specifically addressed this issue, and talking to the school. And the takeaway, it was in the letter that I provided, council played, but the takeaway is if you really want more parking, build a deck, and the district already has the land to do that. Instead, it's going to contribute to Greenville 2040, sort of reduce housing stock during horrible crisis, replace green space with impervious surface, increase car dependence over walkability and undermine the neighborhood that the city worked so hard to restore. And we have options, we have options that we're happy to discuss, this per industry parking, on-campus reconfiguration, shared use lots, structured parking, smarter acquisitions. And these aren't hypotheticals, these are strategies that this city has successfully implemented in many others like Alpharetta, Mayfield, Asheville, and so many more. So in conclusion, we're just asking for the school district to rise to the occasion for the city, for our residents, and for the parents and the student, and the future generation of students who are going to go to Greenville. I appreciate y'all's time and still letting me speak, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Share your address with the salt record. Thank you.
Dennison LaRue, 106 Olive Garden, Greenville.
Okay. Okay, is anyone else who signed up to speak on the topic want, wish to speak at this time? Okay, just come forward and, yeah, if you signed up, happy to. Just give your name and, you know, for the clerk.
My name is Ayla Lures Connor. It's A-Y-L-A. My parents did not make it very easy on me.
Oh, you're the Green Avenue person?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay. That's right. Okay.
Members of council, as I just stated, my name is Ayla Lures Connor. With Dennison, I am the Vice President of the Green Ave Neighborhood Association. I live at 508 Green Avenue, so on the street where this zoning is potentially going to be recurring. As Dennison stated, I want to be brief because I know that this is deferred, but we are trying to keep the neighborhood, the integrity of our neighborhood. Simply put, I've lived here for nine years, I've really enjoyed it. We just did an addition on our home. We plan to stay here. We have a one-year-old daughter. We hope one day that she can also go to Greenville High School. Our neighborhood is a vibrant mix of individuals from all races, all income levels, all ages, and all genders living in single-family homes. This property is zoned residential. These are not going to be condos or apartments. The hope is that this rezoning gets denied so we can continue having single-family homes in this neighborhood, homes for hope or habitat for humanity, which we also have in our neighborhood. One thing that is very important to me is safety, especially being the mother of a one-year-old daughter. And I'm not sure if the parents of the Greenville High students know this, but in 2024, there's a traffic study that was done on the corner of Dunbar and Green, which is one block away from the proposed rezoning. They identified several needs for pedestrian safety improvement. That intersection of Dunbar and Green is one of the highest amount of traffic incidents in our city, despite it being in a 35 mile per hour and 25 mile per hour zone of the city. That traffic study requested sidewalk repairs. Currently, there is corners on Green Avenue and Ance Street that do not have accessibilities for strollers or for wheelchairs. They do not have the appropriate ramps. They also do not have high-visibility crosswalks or pedestrian signs. So if we're going to include 19 parking spaces with increased high school students and increased pedestrian traffic, we're now increasing the dangers and potential safety risk for neighborhood residents as well as high school students. Our concern is that 19 additional parking spaces is going to ruin the integrity of the neighborhood in regards to the single-family homes. It is also going to increase the dangers that propose to pedestrian foot traffic. And finally, as Dennison mentioned, 19 additional parking spaces is not going to solve the school district's problem. The school district, as Dennison mentioned, we would love to be able to come up with some sort of agreement with the city, whether that be looking at other properties, whether that be resident permits, whether that be working in conjunction for a parking deck or any other solutions. But the neighborhood, we would like it to maintain its neighborhood integrity, and we would just respectfully ask the city council to deny the basic request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else on that topic? Yeah, okay. Well, I'm, I see, I'm sorry, I see your, I see your hand right there.
I'll be very brief. My name is Evan Smith. I live at 97 Lincoln Street, and I know it's deferred, so I'll say to you guys all the time. Basically, a lot of people in the neighborhood were not aware of this until very recently. It's a lot of young families, a lot of people who are very busy. It just, it feels as though this was sort of put before us, and it kind of, basically all we want is transparency, and because it's been deferred, we hope there can be conversations that are had in a more formalized way so that everyone can sort of have some input, especially because it's our neighborhood where our kids live. And yeah, that's basically all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I'll say in defense, it went through the usual process of posting, and there was a planning, planning commission hearing on this subject before this, and so it's gone over a long period of time, but just came to us at this stage in the process. Okay, I'm sorry, you had, yes.
I'm Karen Rowan. I am a Greenville High School graduate. I'm a Greenville High School current parent, and I am a staff member at Greenville High School. I came tonight to ask for the approval for this mall-out for parking for our Greenville High students. I want to mention, I realize this is only a band-aid to fix a significant issue, but I think it's a step in the right direction. Our school is currently working on a plan to help our parking challenges, but it is obviously long-term. This is a quick way to help multiple families, most of whom are tax-paying city residents. While I am aware of the history of communication between the city and the school district, and I appreciate the city's efforts, I am hopeful the plan moving forward will be a safe one both parties can feel comfortable with, and I'm hopeful that conversation yields to a productive outcome very soon. We all know of the significant growth of our school, and with the laws of county square parking, and with additional signage placed just this school year in neighboring streets with two-hour parking and no parking on this side of the street, we have a real challenge. I drove through the West End last night and was not surprised to see the Greenville High School parking lot full from folks attending the drive-in, which is very common. But I also saw great police presence in, to escort pedestrians to safety, to safely cross streets using new crosswalks that have been recently added. It is very different than watching our student body of nearly 2,000 students in the mornings and in the afternoons, where it feels as if multiple accidents are waiting to happen because of the lack of sidewalks, the lack of crosswalks, and crossing guards. If this space is not approved for GHS parking, I strongly urge additional traffic safety studies around the proximity of the school during heavy use times. The safety of our students is a serious issue. Our downtown schools such as Blythe, Augusta Circle, Hughes, and Greenville High are all in neighborhoods, and we are so thankful for kind neighbors. So many of my friends love living close to these schools, and knew when they bought their homes, there could be some challenges with traffic and parking. Greenville High is one of only three high schools in the city, and certainly the oldest still standing. I am aware of the plans for the Howell Street Garage, but Greenville High needs parking intended for our school. Downtown in the West End has benefited greatly from our school parking lots for many years, and what a wonderful setup, what a win-win. Years ago, my grandparents, Tom and Elizabeth Gowers, sat exactly where you're sitting today. I understand your decisions are hard. I understand how important partnerships are for our schools and for our cities. We all want a strong, safe, and accessible education for all of our students. Thank you for helping us achieve that goal, and thank you for your serious consideration of this vote for our school community.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
We will be about this in the next, next few weeks. Can I move on to the other speakers tonight? We have, yes, you want to do it? Okay. No?
Hi, my name is Kathy Elmer Kelly, and I'm Kathy Younger Kelly, and I live at 406 Ample Street, which is only one house away from where they're intending on putting a parking lot. And I built my house 13 years ago with the intention of staying and living and dining my own, and I want it to be a safe neighborhood. And one of the concerns that I have is my property value is going to diminish, and it's not going to be a safe neighborhood. And what they're planning or proposing is that they're going to put up, they're planning on buying two lots and only putting up 19 spaces, and their intention is putting up 100 spaces. That means that they're going to be buying up a lot more property in our neighborhood, and there goes the neighborhood. So it's just like a sliding slope. So once this is approved, it just will diminish and, you know, ruin the neighborhood. So I strongly oppose, and all those people here that are opposed, stand up. I mean, there is a lot of people that are opposed to this happening, and we live in the neighborhood, and we want it to remain a neighborhood, and it's remained residential, and we'd like it to stay residential. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Dr. Presley, I called on you before you were here. Just, I read the letter from the school district about deferring the item and made the point that.
I'll defer as well.
We look forward to that conversation from the city standpoint, working with everybody who's involved in this, so thank you for that. You made a grand entrance in the last, yeah. Okay, thank you. All right. That's all for this time. Sylvia Palmer, you've got, signed up to speak next.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sylvia Palmer, native Greenvilleian, live in Nickel Town, and I'm here to talk about the homeless situation of the city of Greenville. Greenville has attracted thousands of new citizens because of the beautiful amenities in our city, and that's nice. But when the ugly side of Greenville is seen because of an increase in the number of people who are homeless, sleeping in public parks, on sidewalks, benches, parked in garages, et cetera, this gives the tension of a need caused by many things attributed to Greenville's rapid growth, mainly created by the lack of truly affordable housing available within the city, and also the wage gap of service workers who helped to sustain the beautiful restaurants, hotels, et cetera, of Greenville. Recently, an ordinance was presented that would penalize these individuals. What a shame. Please find ways to help instead of wanting to lock them up. May I so strongly request council do less talking about hiding the problem and seriously, and I quote, "put boots on the ground to implement changes to correct this problem. Use the same energy that was used by council to travel to other cities to learn what worked in them that helped to make Greenville an award-winning city and concentrate on finding ways that are successful in addressing homelessness." There are many successful programs that exist, namely one in our vicinity is the Dream Center, located in Easley, South Carolina, and it's a good place to visit to see how they have addressed successfully the homeless situation. It is a very successful nonprofit organization with Christian-based efforts. Also, please Google "select successful tiny home programs for the unhoused" that exist across the country that help with the homeless population. Every citizen, no matter race, color, creed, et cetera, deserves a place to call home. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie. Reverend Thornton.
Minister Clarence Thornton, I'm just here to say that we are in a disturbing time in this city and here in America, where gentrification is okay, low-income people are forced out of their neighborhoods, a piece of the homeless, but I say that we pray to God, but we refuse to follow God's word. We refuse to follow Jesus' word. How can we call ourselves Christian, a Christian nation, a Christian city, when we refuse to read the will of God and Jesus? The Bible is clear, don't get scared of the word of the Lord. The Bible teaches faith without works is dead, which brings me to this point. What would Jesus do? May I remind you, wasn't Jesus homeless? Jesus said, "The boxes have holes, but the son of man has no place to lay his head." May I remind you, what would Jesus do? Whoever do to the least of these, do it unto me. May I remind you, of the words of God, give unto the poor. What would Jesus do? Would Jesus send them away, or would Jesus feed them? How can you teach Jesus on Sunday and don't eat them on Monday? Part of being a Christian is to emulate Jesus. What would Jesus do? May I remind you, Jesus said, "Hold." If Jesus fell asleep in this park, would you arrest Jesus? I've been part of Greenville for over six years. One sign that speaks to me the most is the silent Washington Street that says, "Jesus saved." This mission, they feed the homeless, they clothe the homeless, they house the homeless. This is what you want in real Jesus is. You have a poor with you always? Why? Because you don't follow the Bible? You don't follow the commands? Jesus told the rich, "Give unto the poor." Are you kidding me? Because his body was his idol. If you ask the city council, I ask you, do you love Jesus? Do you? Jesus said, "Leave my feet." How can you go back to your church and teach your congregation and your children and fail on this simple issue? No man in the city has ever passed such an order. Mayor Max Hollis said, "Give back to the poor." I'm just here to tell you this and ask this. People are being punished for being poor, and as Scripture will say, and I'm in with this, better to be poor than walking the tares than to be quickly in one's way, even though.
Okay. All right, thank you. We have the consent agenda up front. Motion in second, please.
Motion second.
Motion in second. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Deворcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Excuse me, yes. Councilmember Brasington, Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Regular agenda, 15A.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.20 acres of real property and 0.65 acre of adjacent right-of-way at 12 Webb Road, and to provide the zoning designation of BH, Business Heavy District.
So moved.
Motion second. Any discussion on?
I just have one question. Michael, why is this Wade, or maybe not you, maybe Chief Horton, why is this Wade Hampton Fire District designated as that? I guess, I mean, that's...
We're still coming back from the Greenville Fire, that's so...
Okay. Just an interesting geography that that's who's responding, but...
Yeah, a lot of cleanup in that area. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Deворcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
15B.
An ordinance to annex approximately 0.48 acre of real property and annex approximately 0.15 acre of adjacent right-of-way located on South Calhoun Street, Jenkins Street, and Short Minus Street, and to provide the zoning designation of RNA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. This is in conjunction with a housing project, is it not?
Yes, sir. The property owner is planning on partnering with the Greenville Housing Fund to build five duplex units across the site, so 10 affordable...
Five affordable houses, yeah, okay.
Will, will this also require the annexation of the triangles on Minus Chapel and, I don't know where that one is. You see what I'm talking about? Those, those small triangles.
I see it. It's not part of this petition right now. We would have to work with those property owners to bring those parcels in as well.
Okay.
I think they're on our list.
Okay, clerk, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Deворcan.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
15C.
An ordinance to annex approximately 4.72 acres of real property at 351 Halton Road, and to provide the zoning designation of BH, Business Heavy District.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, another one Halton Road. Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Deворcan. Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
15D.
An ordinance to annex approximately 34.31 acres of real property at 100 St. Joseph's Drive, and to provide the zoning designation of CM Campus District.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. This is a pretty significant annexation, and school district folks may want to make note that we're annexing St. Joe's High School, the Catholic school, of course. Anybody from St. Joe's here tonight? Oh, okay. Oh, good, okay. A longstanding discussion. We're happy to have you in the, in the city of Greenville. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
That means we can help you on your parking issues, too. That's kind of what we do within the 50. 15E, but thank you.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 0.27 acre of real property located at 104 Pine Street from RHD to RNA.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second. Any questions? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
Okay, 15, 15F.
That one is put...
That's deferred.
Well, I've got, we have to take a motion, though.
Move to defer.
Second.
Move to defer.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor White.
Aye.
The item will be deferred, and we will be in close contact with everybody on, who's associated with this issue. 15G.
An ordinance to rezone approximately 0.18 acre portion of real property generally located on Walden Road from MX2 to RHC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.